Say today?
Yeah.
Don't fly tomorrow.
No, I have.
Going to get that.
Yeah. Hopefully I get off with it Monday.
Be the last one to leave.
Yeah, or earlier.
More stress, it's more difficult. Yeah, mental, yeah, mental tide, yeah. All right, we're good.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you take your seats, we're ready to start our November 17th commission meeting. Welcome to everybody who's present. City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Good evening, Commissioner Castillo.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Good.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Saipal.
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, please stand and follow me in our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, we have a couple of awards, and this is the first time I'm going to come down and the audience should present them after COVID.
Who's on the phone?
Yeah, my mic, uh. Sounds like a hung up. Goodbye. Well. You go. Okay, we don't have a moment. So we have, try to squeeze from here. All right, could I have our great finance department come forward?
Hi. Go on, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ever since I've been for a long, long time, I've had the pleasure of presenting our finance department with this great award. Let me tell you, it's well deserved, and it says Certificate of Recognition for Budget Preparation. And the certificate of recognition for budget preparation is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association to those individuals who have been instrumental in their government unit achieving a distinguished budget presentation award. The distinguished budget presentation award, which is the highest award in government to budgeting, is presented to those government units whose budgets are judged to adhere to program standards. So ladies and gentlemen, again, it has been a great pleasure to present our finance department with this award. Congratulations. Picture, anybody? Anybody holding? No.
No worries, no worries about the picture, Johnson. I just, thank you, Mayor, I just want to point out that I don't do this alone, and this is on behalf of our charter schools, I know you said the finance department. I work with a great team, a great boss, and it's always a team effort, and I'm accepting this on behalf of them.
Well, thank you. And we expect to give another one next year.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, if I could have, if I could have Delaney Soit, Vasquez. Vasquez, I knew that was you.
That's me, but these are both for our schools, both of them.
But they're different.
Yes, they are.
But, but, don't touch it, I gotta read it. All right, Delaney. The Meditarius Budget Award is presented to the City of Pembroke Pines Charter Schools for excellence in the preparation and issuance of its budget for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021. The, this budget adheres to the principles and standards of ASBO International Meritorious Budget Award criteria. So again, congratulations. All right, congratulations.
Mayor, did you see the showing card that was out there?
Sure, I did.
Make us go on. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Um, you jumped right into, into the presentations. I just wanted to say to everybody that either participated, came out, or thought about it, and certainly all the staff that put it on, what a fabulous Veterans Day ceremony that we had, a remembrance and honoring of our, of our veterans and how, just how really moving, I think, that it was. And I, I will tell you that our speakers were great, the fact that there were so, so many folks there that we were able to, you know, to honor. But part of the, the, one of the, one of the coolest parts for me was while we were sitting there and talking about our veterans and, and how grateful and thankful we need to be for all that they've done, for the, really, the, the life opportunities that they have given us because of their, of their dedication and, and sacrifices. We were sitting there and we were facing south, we were facing the monument, but just south of that was a, a playground. And there were families that were there, there were kids that were there, that were small children that were there, chasing each other, playing tags, going on the swings, and just laughing and giggling and just having one heck of a good day. Um, and, and their parents were able to, you know, to be there with them and to, and to do that. Now, while that doesn't, doesn't actually have to do with the Veterans Day, it really does have to do with Veterans Day, but be, because of Veterans Day and what has been sacrificed, we are able to have those playgrounds and we are able to have those places where families can go and young children can go and just lead a very happy, fulfilled life. And so, um, that's kind of my take, Mayor, on veterans, not taking anything away from, from the actual ceremony of the veterans, but what that has allowed cities all over the world to be able to do that, that have that freedom, um, that we also enjoy and hopefully none of us ever take for granted because it is very, it is very special, it is very special. So I just wanted to bring that up, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, and you're right, our first responders were there as usual in armor and really was very pleasant. And thanks again to our staff for putting that all together. We do it every year, we'll never forget. Okay, announcing items to be pulled from the agenda, City Clerk.
No items to be pulled, Mayor, but if I can please make a note to everyone that the item placed as number 16 on the consent agenda should be read as a regular item, it's a regular item, and not tallied as a consent item. Therefore, consent items are number one through 15.
Got it, thank you. Items, that's a request to the public?
No, I, no, I.
Is that the request of the public?
All right. Announcing the board. Question, Mr. Castillo.
Does the consent agenda also include 17, 18, and 19?
No.
We can add those?
No.
Okay.
Okay, announce for the board the committee appointments?
No announcements, Mayor.
All right. We're now on consent agenda, item one through 15, what is your pleasure?
14.
Okay, 14. Saipal.
And 15, Mayor.
15. Okay, um.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So item three. Item seven. And item 10.
Okay, the final polls. All right, with that, I'll need an approval for items one, two, four, five, six, eight, nine, and 11, 12, 13, 14, 13. What is your pleasure?
I don't know.
Moved by Commissioner Saipal, second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor, discussion? Hearing on, all in, call the roll, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Saipal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I have a request, if you don't mind, before we get to the items pulled. Uh, the city manager is not feeling well tonight, so I'm going to pull a couple items out of order without objection. Item 16, City Attorney, would you read that into the record, please?
Certainly, Mayor, if you will, give me just a moment. Item 16 for the record and for those on the agenda, it is a motion to approve the 10th Amendment to the agreement between Calvin Giordano and Associates Incorporated and the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida for building, building services for initial five years and six months period beginning December 29, 2021, and ending on June 30, 2027, with two additional three-year renewals instead of annual renewals and providing from effective date. Item 16 on the floor, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, is there a motion?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Castillo, is there a second? Second? A motion, I'll, I'll make the second. All right, item motion, uh, discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
The Commissioner Saipal.
Thank you. Um, and, and I, and I want to thank my colleagues again for, I requested at their, at our last meeting that this be deferred to tonight because I, as hard as I had tried, I had not been able to get, um, all of the information, um, that I needed in order to, um, make my decision on how I was gonna, gonna vote on this. And so, having, having done that, um, there, there are a lot of factors that are rolling into this, uh, into this contract, into the direction that we take with this contract. So, um, when I, when I make a vote on, on an issue, it's never about, um, personality or person or persons or whatever. It's really based upon information that I'm able to gather and what ends up being the very best decision for, for my city, uh, in, in my opinion, what is the best decision for my city. And so, hav- having said that, um, I, I can't support the item as it is written, um, with a five-year, um, uh, five-year renewal and two, three years, which would then give this contract 11 years. Um, and I just think that that's too long of a timeframe, um, that this contract has not been out for bid. Um, and, and it's been many years that it has not gone out for bid and has been able to, uh, roll over, and, and, and that was fine, but at some, at some point, other things have to be taken into consideration. So, Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion if I could.
You can make an amendment.
Can I make an amend, I'm sorry, make an amendment to the motion?
Okay.
I would like to amend, um, three-year contract with a one-year renewal option, and that at the end of the second year, that there be a performance evaluation that would have to meet the standards that we, that we are looking for and, and to be able to move forward. Also that, because of timing issues, if I'm asking for a performance evaluation at the end of the second year in order to determine if we go into the, the third year of this, the performance evaluation would have to be started to be able to be presented to us before the end of that second year, in order for us to have information to make a, a decision on. So, Mayor, I know that's kind of a, a lot of, a lot of language sort of explaining, but that was my, my amendment is to offer a...
Is there a second, City Clerk?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Castillo.
I do have a question, though.
Okay, hold on. Uh, go ahead with your question.
Can we have the app, uh, the CGA come forward, please?
Okay, while they're coming forward, Mr. Dodge?
Yes, Mayor.
You wanna make a comment?
Um, I, I certainly believe that, uh, this is an appropriate direction that we should support because it provides the continuity and it also provides it at a very critical time now in the transition of a lot of our software and programming. So I would, I would support Commissioner Cyphal's request.
Okay, Commissioner Castillo, question?
Thank you very much. Mr. Giordano, you have to identify yourself.
Chris Giordano, Cavendish.
Light word says push the speak. Uh, uh, there you go.
Chris Giordano, Cavendish.
Lift it up, Chris. There you go.
Mr. Giordano, this, uh, this commission's done a fair amount of due diligence in this. I have a gift for understatement today. Uh, we've done a lot of due diligence on this contract, and I just want you to know that from this commissioner's perspective, your staff is, is, is performing the job that we need them to perform. I'm proud of them. I hope that they have not suffered too much in terms of their morale as a, as a result of having go through this prolonged series of, of, of conversations that, that we've had. But they've been important conversations to those who have, who have raised the issues. With respect to, to Commissioner Cyphal's amendment, which I have seconded, is this acceptable to you?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, all right, let me just say, any further discussion? Vice Mayor, you had a question?
Uh, yes.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, uh, discussion.
Go ahead.
So I, uh, I too am in agreement with my colleague in, in that the contract terms are very difficult for me to accept. I, 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 I don't even know that I can accept what my, my colleague has presented. I understand, you know, a three-year with a one-year renewal, that seems still not to address the issues that I have concerns about because, again, this has been a, a very long contract that hasn't even been tested in the market when we know that the market is there to be competitive. I'm not, again, too focused on staff or people or things like that. I'm just, again, focused on process. I've not been anything less than consistent in that honesty. So I, I just, I, I wanna share with you where, where my concerns are and, and some of the, what we're being asked to, to do here with a five-year, and then, of course, now a three-year. It's quite different than what it was originally set up as a one-year annual renewal as opposed to these multiple-year renewals. So one of the things that I do is I do take a look at how, um, we are being presented on the, call it the, the procurement element, the procurement code. You know, how, how is it that the procurement code allows us to go from a, from a contract that was an annual contract to something quite different than what that contract originally represented? And so there's two references particularly that speaks to, um, pardon, our procurement code thirty-five point eighteen C two. And that says basically that, um, you know, that's one of the, one of the procurement codes that's being referenced to us is why we can do this. And it says, the reason why is because it's a professional services and, and it's a part of an exemption to, to, to a bid process. Um, and then professional services goes on to state basically that, um, you know, it's the professional services involving peculiar skills, ability, expertise, or, or experience which are in their nature unique.
Their nature what?
In their nature, unique and not subject to competitive bidding. Well, it's not unique. I mean, that's how we got this contract in the first place, was through a competitive bid process because there were companies that provide this service. So I'm not convinced from a procurement perspective that this meets that standard. The second procurement reference is, um, section thirty-five point one eight C, excuse me, yes, thirty-five point one eight C eight, which speaks to the best interest of the city. And I refer to the fact, again, that we, we have a competitive market. We haven't tested it. This, this contract's been in existence for a while. I would like to see it go through that process. And we even have our own auditor that make reference to the fact that, you know, we should really seriously consider taking this back out to, to a bid. So to me, that's not in the best interest of the city because there's evidence that shows that we should be testing this in the marketplace. The other thing is too, is that I know that there is a lot of studies, a lot, a lot of things are done, but, you know, again, I question even the negotiated contract that we have right now. Is it truly the best for the city? I mean, there are contracts out there that do seem to have more favorable terms than...
That's not accurate, sir.
Than, than the city of Pembroke Pines. And so I, I, I did do some of my calculations. I, I do have access to...
And, and we did our own as well, if you'd like me to share those, that compare cities like Deerfield, even down to the smaller ones, even in the most recently bid one, which is Wilt Manners, which we're being awarded to next week. It was not as favorable as this one was to the City of Pembroke Pines, even though the town of Rosemont is much smaller than the city.
I didn't yield my time.
I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor, good.
So, so I, I just, I share with you, those are my concerns, my, and so I, I, I can, I can support something probably that's lesser, something that brings this competitive process sooner than a three-year and a, and a one-year. Because I could see it now, three-year, one-year, we're gonna be back talking, I'm, I'm just sorry to say, I just feel that it'll be the same thing all over again. I mean, it's, it's very clear that, you know, staff wants to keep this, this company. I got it. Um, you know, there's a comfort level. But I, on behalf of my constituents, would like to see the process play out and go out to a competitive bid and anything, um, if, if there's, if there is an alternative, if it could be a one-year and a one-year, I, I can go with that, but a three-year and a one-year is, is, is too long for me, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Giordano, comment?
Thank you, Chris Giordano, Cavendish. We did an analysis to show whether this contract, the negotiated contract, was competitive, and it did show to be the most competitive out of all the other areas. There is one that is a seventy-five, twenty-five split where if the amounts are lower or higher, the city does not retain a full twenty-five percent, but the protection is there for the city on about three hundred and some odd thousand dollars in rent and admin fees which aren't paid to the other cities. So as the revenues go down, the city only, the Pembroke Pines contract only becomes richer and richer. So no matter where you go at, any city that is even comparable in size to a population as Pembroke Pines, is this, is the most competitive contract on the market. The one that we're being awarded next week, there's only two bidders.
Okay, Commissioner Schwartz?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Giordano, thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you.
You and I haven't spoken about this item.
Yes, sir.
So it, it's safe to say that there hasn't been any lobbying or anything like that leading up to this point?
Yes, sir.
So this city, um, the city has had, residents have raised concerns about procurement, and this isn't towards Mr. Giordano, this is a general statement. Has had concerns about procurement for a while. Some examples, it's one, we have the commission auditor that says this has to go out the So we're either gonna support our charter officer or we're not. Second, we've had bids where we've awarded the current vendor a contract and they weren't even, they didn't even bid when we went out. This commission awarded a vendor for someone who didn't even participate in the bid process. Then we have this situation where the vice mayor, year and a half ago, year and a half ago, June, says, city manager Dodge, can you see, given the struggles that we're all facing with COVID, can you work with this vendor and all vendors to see if there could be any kind of concession? And as a result of that conversation, we get an eleven-year deal thrown at us four months later. Vice Mayor didn't ask for that. That wasn't my impression, and I think that was unfair to CGA. Because ultimately, the procurement decision by the city administration actually caused more conflict than help. This was driven by the administration, not by the vendor. there is a sense, I think it was two thousand and nine, when I was sitting on the other side, there were three bidders. The county, another, another firm that's conducting business in South Florida, and CGA. And at that point, the commission were the deciders, the rankers, and each elected official was given a tally sheet and was given instructions to rank firms one through three. On that evening, one elected official ranked all three firms the same number, and CGA won the bid by one point. Now, if the elected had actually done what everyone else had done, CGA may have won by two, or there may have been a tie. We don't know. Over ten years ago, we had, we put families out on the street and we privatized the building The, the care that CGA, when they came into the building and brought some of those folks on board and continued to provide the best level of service possible, despite the city administration not supporting the building department in needs that I think is, is, is appropriate. CGA has tried to find ways of making things work by stretching staff thin. That becomes a customer service issue. At a time that our permits are at the highest level, we still have people, structural planners and being moved to other cities, and they're not here full-time. Why? Because of the financial constraints. A year ago, I voted against the extension because I felt a one-year deal was the best thing that can hold the administration accountable and this elected body accountable to provide the necessary things that we could do to work in the best interest of the residents. We have a phone system that's not connected to ours. There is, um, there's a tremendous amount of work that has to go through our planning department that should not have to go through the planning department to get answers. Some of these things, some of these things are shared responsibility. And then I think about the commission auditor who says, wow, we have a contract, you should go out. This city struggled for a little more than a year on waste disposal, went out and then rejected all bids and, hey, let's negotiate with current vendor.
Stay on the subject.
I'm speaking about procurement, sir. That's what happened. And certainly, if, if, whether it's three years from now, or four years from now, or five years from now, the situation's still, let's throw them all out and negotiate with current vendor. I don't believe that would be fair to anyone who's providing services to this city. I don't think the optics are good for the public. I think a fair process based on price, let's be honest, building services are, are, are You can't, you can't go sideways, just like fire and police have to do it a certain way, so does the building department. There's no latitude, there's not a Pembroke Pines way of doing things, there's a state way of doing things. And if we were to go out at some future point, and if I'm reading tea leaves, I don't, I, I see, I see the contract being renewed tonight. But what is the public gonna think? I think the public would feel better if there was a competitive bid process based on just straight price, based upon what the commission auditor said, that we should go out. So certainly, um, if there's an apology, Mr. Giordano, this should have been taken care of a year ago. It shouldn't have gotten to the point that when the vice mayor asked for a reduction that we wind up with this situation now. It's, it's unfortunate. Certainly, I also believe that, um, that there's been a lot of pressure for our building department and the go-between, having to be the go-between, uh, between the city administration, the elected officials, and, and the public at large. You shouldn't have to fight our battles, sir. If there's an ordinance that, or, or, or if there's an ordinance or zoning thing that, that this body did, it's not your, it, it shouldn't be your fight. That's what we did. What are your thoughts, Mr. Giordano, about having a chief building official, being a City of Pembroke Pines employee, and works directly with you to manage staff that can alleviate some of that stress?
Um, Chris Giordano, Cavendish. In order to have full control and responsibility and to take all the burden on of the building official, I would need the building official to be my employee, there'd be split liability. And then, you know, if there was an SLA blown, was it, you know, the city building officials not directing, um, any contract that we have where the building official is a city employee or hourly contracts because I then lose direct control over my staff, you know, I'm not really there in the day-to-day management because that's the, the building official's job. So that's why it normally leads itself to an hourly contract for those reasons.
All right, and how would the contract manager situation look like? Because we have contract administrators oversee contracts. How would that be any different?
So from my end, my building official is the, the contract manager, I would handle all the administrative-type tasks like this and other things. He handles the day-to-day, you know, PTO coverage, uh, you know, things of that nature, any issues with the building code are his as well as personnel.
What can the City of Pembroke Pines do better? From the administration side, I'm putting you on the spot.
I mean, right now...
To do better, to provide... To do better, to provide, to provide better customer service, more transparency, and ease of getting through the system, what needs to change?
I think this is the biggest hurdle in front of us right now, because to the points made earlier, after every commission meeting, I have a staff meeting to address any staff concerns, why does this keep happening, why isn't it getting renewed? Do, do we need to worry about our jobs? I think if we get this done and put to bed, it will be the biggest hurdle to clear, our next hurdle being the software change and then we're off to the races again, you know, focusing on things like the, the code and getting permits issued.
So the ERP, I'm not done, Mayor.
Okay, I'm in amendment now.
That's fine, Mayor, this is like-
We'll deviate, please.
I, I, I'm not gonna deviate.
Okay, I'll remind you.
I think the, the value of the contract is over five million dollars, so I have some questions.
Go ahead.
I think it's the second-largest contract next to Waste Management. Mr. Giordano, staffing levels.
Yes, sir.
You're finding difficulty hiring people, keeping people, senior people. What's, um, what's the plan to, to continue to build a bench of people? What, what's-
There's a limited staff that is BORA-approved. We're attempting to pull people from other counties, Miami-Dade County, for example, we just pulled one person in and got them BORA-approved. Um, the staff that you don't see here every day, it doesn't mean that they, Mr. DeSharnis, for example, one of the original, uh, gentlemen that came over with the original contract, he still is employed, he is enjoying retirement, but in between playing with grandkids and things of that nature, he is doing plan review for us, you just don't see him here every day. We have a system that allows us to share plans electronically, and that's what he's doing, uh, hopefully right now for us.
Is that the ERP system that you're speaking about?
So we have the one we're using right now, but yes, we will switch over to the, to the new ERP system, which it'll be the, a, a different system doing, but the same end result, where he's able to live upstate and, um, still review plans up the coast.
Okay, so the, uh, what does the ING Force platform look like, um, once that switch is turned on to the ERP?
It will stay there as a redundancy to make sure that all the data comes over, and then it'll be there as a historical vault, but that will be it. Um, similar to when we came on, do you remember the old system of ANZIO? It's still around as a historical vault, if somebody comes in, needs to know where a permit was from 1975 or things like that.
Ninety-two, yeah, they can go back to ninety-two, not beyond that.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's still in existence and, you know-
He's talking.
We, we have some folks that can still use the abacus and pull that one up if, if needed. It would be similar to that.
Code enforcement.
Yes, sir.
Um, what can the city do better to, um, make sure that we're able to process things, um, a little bit smoother?
Are you talking about on the code enforcement side or on the building code enforcement?
Well, with respect to how the software talks to each other.
So it'll be one ERP, um, you know, uh, codes going with us on the same sprint, we're both in user acceptance testing right now, so, um, then result will be they will talk better. Um, if they find work without a permit, for example, right now it still does talk to us and it tells us work without a permit or act, after the fact permit and things like that, but this'll do the same and be instantaneous. So when we pull it up on our screen, we will see what type of code enforcement violation is there.
About ten years ago, there was a movement to make a four-day work week, and because we were at the old place that I looked like on the agenda, we're actually gonna knock the building down finally. But the, um, it was the, the reasoning behind, uh, going to a four-day work week, uh, that the administration had said it was a savings of $250,000 in order to keep the lights on. Now we're in this brand-new green building with LED lighting. Um, are you willing to expand to a, uh, to a half-day Friday so that we don't have, um, uh, residents or contractors having to wait until Monday morning to, uh, drop off permitting?
So currently, our staff is working, you know, not a set number of hours, but let's say about a half-day on Friday for inspections and plan review. We do not do intake because that would require, um, people coming into City Hall to, to do intake.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We, we do intake electronically on Fridays.
Would you be amenable, would you be amenable to improve the intake side of it, considering that we are going to an electronic format?
Electronically, yes, we already do intake and process permits on Friday, so yes, we could do that electronically.
All right.
All right.
No, I'm not, I'm not quite there yet, Mayor.
Eight minutes.
And if it takes eighteen, so they-
Okay, but stay on the subject, please. Other people wanna talk.
Uh, Mr. Giordano, the, um, uh, the city spent a lot of the money building the second floor and cubicles and that sort of thing. Is there any kind of customer service improvement that could be done up there to make the intake better, the, uh, the interaction between, uh, four windows and the, um, I, I guess the cavern that's going on up there? Uh, is there something that the city can do to make, uh, capital improvements to make this process better for, uh, residents and contractors?
As we see improvements, we work with city administration and we've made them. Um, if you go up in the building department, there's additional cubicles, some have been moved around, um, there's some in the back, uh, now that weren't there before, so as we see them, we do discuss that with them, we make a plan and move forward with them.
The, uh, city, um, commission auditor, um, in the report, uh, in, in, in my humble opinion, came a little short, uh, and put a lot of the, um, a lot of the blame on CGA. Uh, how are we doing with our fire department and that whole process and our engineering department? You have no control over either one of those processes, correct?
We will intake the permits and we notify them that the permits are there for their review, but no, I don't have control over that staff, they're not CGA staff.
But certainly, they could cause delay or, um, there's issues that, that occur there, right? So how-
The other departments could cause the delay.
Mr. Mayor, if you're referring, if I may, if you're referring to city staff-
Please, clear that up.
Such as engineering and fire inspections, if there's an issue, uh, that's causing a delay for them to finalize the permit, I'm sure it would be brought to our attention. And if there is one, then we will address that, that has nothing to do with the Calvin, uh, contract.
Thank you.
Well, it does have to do with the commission auditor's, um, evaluation of how the building department operates, and that's my point.
So we went through the, um, issues with the auditor and we identified those that were, um, if the plan was real late for any department outside of CGA's control and they addressed those.
Um, Mr. Giordano, for the last six years, it's been an annual contract, agreed?
Correct.
Is there any reason why it shouldn't be annually?
It, it was actually my request to make it a multi-year for this negotiation, because we were getting, um, down pretty deep into the cuts, and for that, I, I requested multi-year.
What does the multi-year provide, you and your organization?
Stability for the staff, mostly. Um, there's a lot of cost with any changes that we were to do. Um, we did lose some people, you know, they don't directly tell you why all, all the time, but some folks left when the turmoil started with the renewals, I, I can't pinpoint that exactly, but there's cost with all of that.
Thank you, sir.
Good. Let me, uh, I wanna make a comment. My turn.
Your turn.
Okay. Uh, let me just say, if we have a problem with administration, it's up to us to take care of that, not you. The commission has that job. I've been here since you've been here. I like what you do.
Thank you.
I like what you've done, I like what you do. We have had tremendous problems, like every other city, in the last two years with the COVID, where people have gone home to work. And people, when they went home to work, remodeled our houses for offices. So by the Pembroke Pines options, they have to have permits for that. Hence, if you look at forty-eight thousand homes in Pembroke Pines, plus others and apartments, that's a lot of permits. Well, I would love to have permits done instantly, you know, I've called, said, what about this? We found out the contractor has not submitted the right process for the permit to be, uh, approved, you know, we found that out to be true. So I'm gonna support this, because I think you're doing a good job, and when the commission auditor made that comment, I called them, and I had a great length, uh, lengthy discussion with them. I'm satisfied with this amendment, and I'm satisfied with your department. Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, um, I wanna thank Commissioner Schwartz for bringing up the issue about the, the city building official. I can tell you that, you know, this contract originally, or when, when this went out to bid originally, it contemplated clearly, uh, a city building official. And for me, it made good sense, because the best contract manager probably is a city official, uh, a building official overseeing the contract staff, call it. Um, you spoke about liabilities, uh, you know, again, that gives me more, um, reason to believe why going out to a bid allows that kind of liability be negotiated in a contract that can be put out in the bid process and then it can be negotiated. I, I, I understand my colleagues and, 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 Mr. Mayor, I understand you and I understand, you know, there's this, you know, comfort level, and I just still wanna stay kinda tuned in a little bit to, you know, some of the parameters that we, uh, we need, you know, we're guided by, you know, through some of our code again. Um, you know, this is a substantial change from what this originally was, this was a one-year contract annual renewal. If this was a one-year annual renewal process right now, I would have a whole lot more, uh, comfort, because that's the way the contract is sort of written right now, and giving, you know, support to it, but because we're deviating from that, I'm, I'm just having very difficult time. And so I say that, because one of the things that I would like to see if it could be, uh, agreeable to is, is that we maintain the one-year renewal process, um, and let's say we do it for three years, but at three years, we have a hard stop and we go out to bid after the third year of the annual renewals, because then that would give us time to get a few more of our concerns put on the table to make certain that we're getting the best that we could possibly get from our contractor for our residents. Because again, I still, my biggest, you know, one of my bigger concerns when we talk about what's a value to the residents, it's, it's that, because CGA is a great value to developers, but developers come and they go. And a lot of our residents, uh, some of our, uh, people that live here, when they have to come through the process, are sort of treated like developers but don't know that process. And when they don't know that process, I don't believe that they get the treatment that they should be getting. And I really will continue to stay focused on that. But I, I would like to, and I don't know how you would do this, if this would be a substitute amendment, I'd like to just put it out there and just say, is that-
You can put an amendment to the amendment.
The amendment to the amendment?
Go ahead.
So my amendment to the amendment would be that, uh, that we do an annual renewal for three years with a hard stop after the third year, knowing we're gonna go out to bid.
The second to the amendment. Second to the amendment. Second, second by Commissioner Schwartz? Okay, on the amendment, discussion. All right, City Clerk, call a roll on the amendment to the amendment.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyphal?
No.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Mayor Ordus?
No.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We're on the amendment now. Uh, City Clerk, call a roll for the amendment.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I now say, Attorney, do we have the motion as amended, or are we clear?
I think for the purpose of the record-
Vice Mayor, just to restate the amended motion, the first amended motion, uh, which is the three-year term with a one-year renewal.
Correct.
That's, that was the amended, that was the motion filed by Commissioner Cyphal. That's the principal motion before the commission, uh, to ratify that item would be useful. It will require staff, if this item passes, to revise the document before you.
Okay. So we're all set?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure also that, and I know I had a, a long, a long speech when I was making it, but also my requirement that at the end of the second year, there's a performance evaluation, um, and that it is to be completed by the end of the second year, so it would have to be start, you know, started whatever time would be necessary-
That was understood in the amendment.
That was part of it, and I wanna make sure that that is still carried forward, that that, that that happens.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was part of the, the first amended motion by, by Commissioner Cyphal, which I believe Mr. Giordano concurred with at the podium, correct, sir?
Correct.
I have a question, City Attorney, Mayor.
Okay. All right, Mr. Giordano, thank you. Uh, City Attorney? City Attorney?
I, I have a question, though, to City-
About what?
Uh, about the, uh, about the contract.
The motion's passed.
I, I understand the, uh, the contract term. Uh, Commissioner Cyphal wants to have a, a, a hard-stop evaluation, okay? How does that impact the, uh, the, um, the contract? Is there a-
City Manager.
Is there a termination clause for convenience or anything? What would this evaluation trigger other than, uh-
City Manager.
You know, feeling like something's happening?
I believe in the, uh, contract as it currently exists, there is a provision for, uh, convenience of termination.
There is.
And it's in all of our contracts, so that doesn't change anything.
Is it thirty days, is it a hundred and eighty days?
I believe it's at least a hundred and eighty days due to the fact that, uh-
Transition.
The process and, um, going out for proposals and awarding them in transition, which might not even be long enough, but I believe that was determined, there are a hundred and eighty days, Sam, is that correct?
That's my understanding, Mr. Dodge.
Yes.
All right, good.
I'm sorry, I, I have to make a comment here on this.
Not on that item, the item's passed.
No, no, I just want, on this discussion here for a moment?
Well, first of all, there shouldn't be any discussion, that's what hap- go ahead, Vice Mayor, but I'm trying to run this meeting the way it's supposed to be run. The item's over, there shouldn't be any discussion, but go ahead. We're a good commission, go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, we, we were talking about the hundred and eighty days, that's what the contract says, and that's what the city manager says, but one of the things that, uh, I'm concerned about is that we only get notice ninety days in advance when contracts are, are coming up for renewal. Uh, that's in our contract database, uh, never has this contract in the past ever come up.
Vice Mayor?
Well, every contract has a term, and even though it's standard, we give a ninety days, it would be given to you ninety days prior to the hundred and eighty days, which means you would get the notification ninety days prior to that.
All right.
So it's really you have access to the two hundred and seventy days.
I appreciate you saying that for the record, that's, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. All right, City Attorney, we're on item twenty, please.
Thank you, Mayor, for the patience.
I think we need to call the vote, right?
We did. We're all set, passed. Item twenty, sir.
Point of order?
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
I believe that we passed the amendment, but-
No, I asked, we, I, I asked, and the City Attorney verified that in fact we passed the motion, correct, City Attorney?
Just to clarify, I'm gonna request, I'm gonna take a step back, Mayor, and suggest that the amended motion be ratified by the commission by motion, particularly with the issue of the three-plus-one person performance evaluation.
Okay, I asked, I thought we had it all set.
Yes, I'll take a step, thank you, Mayor.
City Clerk, call a roll, please, on the, motion as amended.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yeah.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you. We're on second reading ordinance, if you, we're gonna do these out of order because Mr. Dodge is a wounded person in his-
Mayor, may I read, please?
Second reading ordinance.
On number twenty for the record, it's a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty-two-one-dash-twenty-five on second and final reading. It's a proposed ordinance number twenty-two-one-twenty-five is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter fifty of the city's code of ordinances entitled Water and Sewer Regulations, providing for revisions to the city's water and sewer regulations as detailed in exhibit A attached here too and incorporated herein, including definitions, fees, payment requirements, and enforcement, providing that ordinance number nineteen-sixty-four, amending section fifty-dash-thirty-five and fifty-point-thirty-six to be consistent with the requirements of the South Florida Water Management District, remains in full force and effect and unaffected by the changes to chapter fifty approved herein, providing for codification, providing for conflicts by underseverability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Item twenty-two-one-twenty-five on the floor, thank you, Mayor.
Is this item twenty-two-one, is that a second reading, is that a public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, the answer is yes, to public hearing.
Okay, public hearing, I'll open it up to the public. Hearing none? Okay, now we'll need a motion?
I'm over.
Moved by Commissioner Castillo?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Cyphal. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes, just so-
On item twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, I, uh, stand with my, uh, comments from, uh, the first reading. I find this is a substantial change to the way that we do business in the city. I do believe that we should have done a bit more of a public outreach, uh, in order to get public input prior to putting this ordinance together, so, uh, for that reason, I'm not gonna be able to support this today.
All right, thank you. Further discussion. City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good? Vice Mayor Good?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
If I may, the permanent number for this item is, uh, ordinance number 1978, 1978.
1978. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, if I may, um-
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah. I just wanted to thank, uh, City Administration for putting out that, uh, education video, uh, leading up to this, um, uh, billing cycle. It was very informative, super easy to understand.
Do you like the job I did?
Huh?
Do you like the job I did?
Well, you know what? I mean, you sound, you sounded a little bit different, but certainly, uh-
Different?
Yeah.
It was amazingly.
Is that what it was?
Thank you. Thank you. What a good job.
Yes.
Item 21, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. 21 is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 202126 on first reading. It's an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 30 of the city's code of ordinances entitled Meetings by specifically amending section 30.15 entitled Agenda, establishing a category entitled, quote, "Commission Auditor Report," end of quote, on the agenda for each regular meeting of the city commission, providing for reports by the commission auditor, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, severability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Item 2021-26 on the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Moved by Commissioner Schwartz. There's a second.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Discussion on item 21.
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Saifal.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I remember the discussion, uh, prior to, to this item. Um, and then I read, uh, you know, what was the agenda item for tonight. And I, I guess I still, I'm a little bit confused as to exactly what, um, Commissioner Schwartz wants, wants to have done. Um, because the last time that it was, that was brought up and we discussed it, I had questions about the word "present." I mean, present meaning I want you to be here, present, or present meaning I want you to present a, a report or, or something. So that was one of my questions and I wasn't clear about. So I would, um, ask, Mayor, if, um, Commissioner Schwartz could, I mean, ha- take an opportunity to really explain more what it is that you want to, want to do.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Certainly. And, um, I, I, I know two weeks ago I was, um, I was on phone, so it may have not-
It was a little harder, right?
It was a little bit more difficult. Uh, so Commissioner Saifal, present, um, only, only when applicable, uh, and that could be via WebEx. Like, we don't physically need the commission auditor to be here in the room to take questions that, uh, the commission or the public has. I think we've learned from, uh, from COVID that we can actually conduct business, uh, via web. Uh, the commission auditor gives, um, a handful of reports a year. It'd just be a handful of times. Some of those reports happen all at the same time. And in order to keep, um, uh, you know, uh, to show deference to the, to a charter officer that's not sitting here all night, put them at the front of the agenda right after items at the request of the public. So we can, you know, just move on from the, from the business. Uh, we have, just like when we have the, uh, city attorney report or the city manager report, you know, more than half the time there isn't a report. So if there's nothing on the agenda, there's no reason for the commission auditor to be hanging around for questions. It would only be if a report has been issued, uh, to the commission at the very next meeting. It needs to be, um, needs to be presented to the public at large. I want to make sure that the public has the same information we do. I hope that answers your question.
Uh, ye- yes, uh, yes, it did. But, um, so our auditor ha- has a list of issues that we, that we provide to him, um, to, to him to, that we want to have audited, different areas that we ask to have in that year's time to be, to be audited. And so what you're asking for then would be that when an audit, when a report, an audit is completed, that the commission auditor or whoever he would designate would come, actually come here and make a presentation to, to us and as well as then the public being able to hear that.
Yes.
Yes. And the second part of it was that you wanted to be able to add this, this placeholder, if you would, at, at the beginning of our commission agenda booklet.
Uh, yes, and tha- that was necessary because of the, um, recent events and, and some of the difficulty and, uh, uh, so yes, the reason why this is here is because the commission auditor is a charter officer. Um, certainly we have that spot for the city attorney. Um, the only other spot we would have, and I'm not saying that, I mean, we, we, there's a need to do so, but, you know, our finance, uh, director, um, certainly has an opportunity to be on the agenda as well. And that's called the budget. Uh, there's no other time that the-
Right, right.
You know, that's there. But certainly, there's things that, that do come up and the public does have questions, so.
So one, just one more clarification, if I could, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Commissioner, um, the, the, uh, the scenario that I presented of, uh, an audit being completed and the report, you know, due to us on what their findings were on the audit, and would, would you also, um, would you also then be in agreement that it, uh, the auditor could physically come here or the, or the auditor could physically, uh, be on the phone providing a report and how, however it would, would work out the best way?
Yeah. Um-
Okay.
If Mayor Marr is listening, uh, being present at a meeting doesn't mean you have to be physically in the room.
[laughing] Okay.
Okay. Yeah, uh, we have WebEx. It, it's fine.
Further discussion. I'm glad you clarified that, because I had, I didn't have that understanding. It must have been the phone.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Item 21. Further discussion. All right, City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yep.
Commissioner Saifal?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
For the record, Mayor and Commission, this item will be heard in final form in, on December the 15th in these chambers for a public hearing on the subject.
All right. The last item we're going to take out of order is item 22, and then the manager can go night-night.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, if you will. Item-
Item 22.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Commission, sorry. This is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2021R-56. It is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the execution of the Second Amendment to the interlocal agreement with Broward County for solid waste disposal and support services. Attached here to is exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to take all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the, of the Second Amendment, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 2021R56 on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion? No one wants to discuss it? All right. The eyes will lack a motion.
Wow, we got it, too. Mr. Mayor-
We're now going back to your three.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Well, I'm waiting for a motion. What would you like to do?
The timeframe-
Get a hammer?
Mr. Mayor, if you will, um, my law partner, uh, Mike Cirillo is on the line. Would like to give you a brief and meaningful presentation on what the item actually is. It is a critically important both legal and operational item-
I believe it is.
Which cannot be cast asunder this evening. It's got to be considered.
Well, I'll tell you what. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the motion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second? Second to the motion? Motion dies with a lack of a second. Mr. Cirillo.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you want me to go ahead and provide the information?
Sure. Mayor, yes. Commissioner Castillo?
I, uh, I'm going to ask the, uh, consensus that we waive the rules that allow Mr. Cirillo to speak on the former item.
What's that?
I'm going to ask that we waive the rules that allow Mr. Cirillo to speak on the item that didn't get a second.
We don't have to waive the rules. He, we, it's the-
The item dies.
The item on the floor.
The item dies.
So Mr. Cirillo is going to speak at the invitation of our city attorney. Mr. Cirillo, go ahead.
And with the prerogative of the chair.
Correct.
Absent your objection, Mayor, unless the body of rule is held.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, um, Mayor, members of the commission. Mike Cirillo, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Uh, this item is here for your consideration. You may recall back in August, the city commission approved, uh, resolution 3759, which approved the, um, interlocal agreement and First Amendment with the Broward County for solid waste disposal services. That First Amendment was, um, necessary because the original agreement that was entered into with the county, uh, was back, uh, had expired in 2018. It was renewed through the First Amendment to 2023. So by entering that First Amendment, we were part of the current term, which expires in 2023. Uh, the, the interlocal agreement that the county, um, has with the cities is tied to the county's agreement with Willabrator for disposal of the waste at their locations. That contract with Willabrator, um, uh, runs to 2023. However, there is a trigger time that has to be done and the county has to make a commitment of a certain amount of waste by January of 2022 in order to, um, in order to, uh, trigger that renewal with, um, Willabrator. I did learn today during the meeting of the solid waste working group that the county did meet that tonnage. However, it's important for the cities to consider, uh, moving forward with this item, uh, in order to understand that the, the term of the, the current interlocal agreement expires in 2023. And the county's looking for the cities to make a commitment to go through 2028, um, so that it has the ability to work with Willabrator on both the traditional waste, which is what we're committing through the Second Amendment, as well as the, um, bulk vegetative and C and D, which the city is not committing through this agreement this evening, but is stating its intent to commit by next May, uh, with the county, um, expecting that it can talk with Willabrator and hopefully bring the expected cost increases to that, uh, down. So what this Second Amendment does is it ties the city to the interlocal agreement through the next term, which is 2028.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. City Attorney, where are we?
The answer is that you have had a presentation from my law partner, a very erudite presentation regarding where we are with this particular proposal. The city, as you know, uh, has a relationship with its current hauler for a period of years, uh, and their disposal is with Broward County. And there are certain conditions that relate to that contract as well. Um, although the city attorney's office is not recommending, uh, for or against the item, the, the answer is that operationally, it's something which the, the commission needs to consider in the context of its current business relationship with the county. Uh, if there's any questions that Mike can answer that have not been answered thus far regarding the ongoing relationship with the county or the interrelationship with the current working group that's looking at other future options regarding the disposal of waste in the county, which has been ongoing now for several months. Uh, I know that Mike's been meeting with that group on a regular basis, uh, whether it be weekly, monthly, et cetera, um, uh, working on some form of, um, interlocal agreement-based relationship between the county and the cities, different than what occurred in the past regarding the RRB, as you know, which, which expired and, uh, turned into, uh, a different, different, uh, situation between the parties. Uh, Mike, is there anything else that you would like to add to the mayor and commission? We're in a bit of a unique situation. There's been no motion, no, no second on the motion, but there are certain operational issues that I would choose not to put the city, uh, in a negative position with, given its current status with the current contract.
The, the only thing I would add is that the, the county has indicated that the, their deadline to submit our intent, uh, commitment to dispose of this waste, contracted waste, and attempt to dispose of the additional waste is Friday, November 19th. So they're asking for it to the city to do this.
I, uh, yeah. I want to, I want to, I want to say that I, I obviously don't and wouldn't have a way of knowing what the concerns of my colleagues were on this. Mine are that I would feel, uh, a lot more comfortable if, uh, if the sequence of events was set up that we did the broad strokes first and the finer strokes after. So I know that the work group has been meeting and that the county has been meeting and there have been many interesting conversations there. This is a difficult subject and I have great respect for everyone who's, who's, who's involved in the planning. However, um, the, the, the time to have certain answers, like how we're going to handle recycling in Broward County and so forth, is long past due. We should have had these answers already. And when I began to read this item, it kept coming back to me. There were conflicts with what the, uh, county plans, uh, uh, this, uh, item plans and what, what, what we're planning for as a, as a, as a county, as a regionality. I had those conversations with, uh, with Mr. Cirillo just, uh, just before this meeting. So I really think that, uh, sooner or later, we're going to have to come back and we're going to have to deal with this in some way. But the, but, but, but the costs that are involved now are very different than what was originally proposed and discussed. The pieces that are necessary logically to make sense of, of, of this system are not in place. Um, and it's very difficult to cast a, a vote. I think that what we're doing tonight, or what I sense we're going to do tonight in terms of passing it up, um, sends a very clear signal that, uh, we need to, uh, get this thing, uh, on the right footing because cities are going to be, uh, are going to end up, um, uh, paying. And it's not just, it's not the cities, it's the residents because the pieces are not in place. And, uh, so I, but I also believe that sooner or later, we're going to have to have a meeting to discuss where the garbage goes, uh, because that's, that's an absolute necessity. So, uh, I'm, I'm very happy to pass on this this evening and, uh, to send the message that, uh, we really do re- need to redouble our efforts and, uh, proceed not with haste but with urgency to answer some of the questions about what this system is going to look like so that we can then, uh, uh, deal with the finer stroke of how to deal with, uh, how to, how to contract with, uh, with Willabrator. And those are my feelings on it.
Okay. Uh, and again, the reason I made a motion was to get it on the table to discuss it. I completely agree with what, so far with the dialogue. I think it needs to come back to us. There's a lot of problems with this. I've got a lot of problems with this. Uh, and when you delve into it, there are a lot of problems.
Mayor?
So, hold up. Hold on. So I would suggest that we, you know, modify it and bring it back. I think that's the will of the commission. Commissioner Saifal?
Thank you, Mayor. There, there, uh, you know, reading through this, I mean, it's pages and pages and pages of, of, there's a lot of information. There is really a lot of information. But my problem is, it's not the right information yet for us to, it's not the complete right information yet for us to make a decision on up or down on this. So I, I can't, I can't go forward with this, um, and, and obligate my city or residents, uh, our residents to, to anything that we don't have, you know, a full understanding of, of what it means and how it's going to affect everything. So I think we need more time with this.
I think we have that feeling. City Attorney, you're getting the feeling?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm getting that feeling, but I have a question, if I may inquire just for the record, uh, to Mr. Cirillo, just to make sure the record is clear. Mike, and to the extent that, that the commission would defer taking any legal action of any kind this evening on the Second Amendment, um, not, not taking into great detail, but could you just highlight for the mayor and commission and for, and for the administration what the consequences might be for not approving this this evening and what in, what impact that might have, uh, on the next set of steps that the mayor and commission are contemplating?
Well-
Let me just, let me just go out, you know, the, the letter from the county provided for a deadline because it needed, it did, it wanted a, it needed an advance notice in order to make the tonnage commitment that it needed in order to renew the agreement with Waste Pro, which was, uh, I'm sorry, Willabrator, which is half a million tons. And so they, they, they asked for the deadline by November 19th. The actual First Amendment that we entered into says that we have till January 15, 2022, um, in order to, you know, to, to, um, e- express our intent to go through another amendment. So this was put in place logistically for the county so that they could meet the half a million. I don't know that they, that they, um, intended it to be, and I don't know how it could be, an unilateral change in the deadline from paragraph six in the First Amendment. That's something we could talk to them about, but I do know that as of today, they have met the commitment, uh, to move forward with Willabrator. Uh, my sense is that, um, given the, given the role of Pembroke Pines, uh, in, in, in the future of solid waste, that, that the county will provide us with any additional information we need and not prohibit us from entering into the Second Amendment if we're not able, or we're not comfortable moving forward tonight. It would, it was just the timeline that the county would like to know that has a commitment for our waste and to work with, um, the Willabrator. So my, my sense would be this could come back to you, uh, but we'd have to confirm that with the, with the county, um, we could do it tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, I think that, Mr. Mr. Cirillo, I think that's a good idea because I don't think the commission is ready to vote on this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may quickly, then, then I assume, uh, uh, Counselor, that what we'll do is, given that the commission's position this evening on the application before it, that you would communicate with the county attorney's office tomorrow as our counterpart at the county, advise them of the commission's position, which was made clear by the commission's non-action on the application before it, uh, and then indicate that for the record so that at least we're, uh, committed to advising them of our status, uh, on the matter. And perhaps the date of January 15, 2022 might otherwise come back into play in that discussion.
Thank you.
Correct, Mike? We'll do that tomorrow?
Yeah. My sense is that, uh, we would advise the county, we took no action on Yeah, my sense is that we would advise the county, we took no action on it tonight, but we're not foreclosing the, the ability to renew under the current rights through January 15, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. All right, we're on item three, City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for accommodating me this evening.
Be safe. Do better, Hodge. Mr. Assistant Manager is going to take over. Here, Charlie. City, City, what was your name again?
Mayor.
Could we go to item three, please?
You're back on the consent agenda, Mayor.
Yes.
I was going to ask if we could take items 17, 18, and 19 out of order, as we have residents that are, okay, never mind, never mind, we'll do three.
Yep. Okay, item three, sir. Ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item three, motion to accept the recommendations within the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee AHAQ report 2021 and transmit the report to the Florida Housing Corporation.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cyper. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't know if any of the AHAQ members are in the audience. Are they in the audience, please?
Any AHAQ members in the audience?
Stand for just a moment.
Oh, hello.
So first, thank you very much for the patience for us to get to this item here, but what, what I wanted to do, Mr. Mayor, is formally recognize the AHAQ group.
Can we introduce them?
Excuse me, sir?
Can we introduce them?
Sure, can you all come up and introduce yourself, please?
Get command down.
I'm sorry, you're gonna, I ask you.
Well, this is important, this is a very important.
Why, say all their names, but I'd rather them speak it to themselves in the record.
Anyone who would like, just grow up to the mic and announce yourself?
We'll have Madam Chair do first. Yeah, it's on.
It's on.
There you go.
Okay.
Karicia Lawes, with the pleasure, servant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karicia.
Hello, my name is Nikita Shannon.
Welcome, and congratulations.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Pinto.
Congratulations. Mr. Scheckter?
Thank you.
Hi. Okay, very good.
Wait, wait, Daniel Alker.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Mayor, thank you all for being here. Wait, 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 because I just want to say something to you all, and, and know that Nikita was the chair for this committee. This was your first time, correct? Participating in that capacity. I, I can tell you, having firsthand experience with this group, very dedicated, very, very intelligent folks, has some very, very fine questions and a very important subject matter to this city. As you all know, that the state statutes changed this committee meeting from once every three years to once every year, and the input that was provided by, by this AHAQ committee has brought some great changes that you will see, or you will see in the report that's being provided to us, and I just thought it was very, very important that we recognize some very, very important people in our city, and I want to thank you all.
Thank you for your dedication towards it. Thank you, thank you. All right, further discussion on the motion.
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo.
Was there a particular number of, of additional units that the city should build for its residents that came out of the war?
Vice Mayor.
I'm going to let Mr. Stan, can you come up and speak to that, please? That's not a straight-out kind of question.
Mike Stan, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Commissioner Castillo, this is an incentive report, so what the board was tasked with doing is to look at various policies as instructed by the state to see where we can incentivize affordable housing. A direct number in terms of units really isn't described, but it's procedures and policies to try to increase the affordable housing stock.
So who's, so who's going to, who's going to, who's going to do the, the analysis that sort of recommends to us how many additional units we need? Who's going to do that analysis?
I don't know if it's a question of who. When we do land use plan amendments, the county.
Will we? Maybe that's a better way to ask it. Will we do an analysis as to how many additional units we need in Pembroke Pines?
When we do a land use plan amendment, the county requires us to do an affordable housing study.
Yes, they do.
This committee reviewed those studies, as well as the new methodology that was developed by the county for evaluating affordable housing. At this moment in time, the city looks pretty good, and as the committee heard and saw and discussed, obviously, most cities have a, let's just say this, the low and very low capacity are underserved. In terms of an amount of units, I, I don't know that number could be quantified right now, it depends on many, many factors, but we always are trying to obtain or develop units at the low and very, very low categories, because those are the most in-demand.
What, what, what I hear, what I hear mostly is young people who've grown up here and feel they have to move away because they can't afford to live in the city, once they become adults and start their careers. And as we know, sustainable cities are cities that have housing that's right for you, no matter what stage of your life you're in.
Hundred percent.
It provides a range of housing, so that you have a continuum of housing within a city. We took extraordinary steps when we converted some of the units or shared some of the units at, at Howard C Foreman with workforce housing. It wasn't just seniors, there's also workforce people who, who, who live there and who paid there. They were all from Pembroke Pines, or they had connection to Pembroke Pines, which I thought was fabulous. When, when I speak to people at the county, when I speak to people in other cities, and I tell them about it, they're just amazed that we have a program like that. It needs to grow. It needs to grow because our, because our residents are asking us for it. So I, I'm very, very thankful for the work that the committee did. I, I grew up in, in a rent-controlled apartment in, in New York, and if I hadn't, if my family hadn't had that, I'm not sure how we would have worked. Affordable housing frames your life when you're a low-income family. It frames your life. It's, it's the frame within which great things can happen, and when you don't have it, great things are difficult, because the money doesn't stretch to take care of all the, all the things that are necessary. I very much want to see that happen for more residents in Pembroke Pines. Where does it have to go? It, it needs to go where it pencils out. There are different, there are different land costs in, in different places, and I've penciled out, I don't know how many thousands of deals in, during my career, I'm retired now, but when I was at HUD, I saw thousands of deals for affordable housing. It has to go where it pencils out, so that you can get the rent that's necessary. Soon, I think, we'll be done paying the bonds on, on the towers. So all of the, all of those rents will then become revenue, not debt service. Bond rates are still low. I think the city should talk about organizing another, another building somewhere where it pencils out, and limit it to the working, the working younger people in, in the city that want to stay, they want to stay here, they want to keep, they want to, they want to raise a family within the city they're from. Teachers, firefighters, police officers, people who work in, in, in the stores, chefs or assistant chefs, people who work in the hospitals. These folks need affordable housing that's affordable to them. I'm not talking necessarily about low-income housing for, for disabled people, but we have that. I'm talking about housing for the people who, who are from this city, who, who are working and need an affordable place to live. So I, I'm very thankful for the work of, of, of the committee. You, you folks did, I read every word in your report, it was terrific, but I think that, I think that if we're going to ascribe seriousness to the issue of affordable housing, we need a production schedule, and we need to start building, not just talking about it or filling out these reports, which are important, but we need to start identifying locations and putting together plans and, and expanding the program. That's my view.
Mr. Stan, my understanding is it should be along transportation corridors. The affordable housing, that was my understanding, we built along transportation corridors.
Mayor, you are correct. We, we do have affordable housing projects coming on board. The city right now is reviewing plans for a supportive housing project at Howard C Foreman. This commission recently approved the senior affordable housing project up near the Pembroke Tower, Part Two. Part One's had a waiting list for years, and the city also, on all of our land use plan amendments, despite the size, we do collect funds for Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which we've, you know, put aside for projects when they come available, or to match projects that are coming available. We've already been to discussions with people from Douglas Gardens, who are looking for additional affordable housing opportunities. The commission has already approved an 80-unit complex, which is looking for grant funding to support their project. I think it's important to note that this committee is no longer a committee that meets every three years, but it's a committee that meets annually. So while we were under a time constraint, as the state statutes change, and we had to appoint a commissioner, the vice mayor, and an alternate to the committee, this committee will now be meeting annually, so this isn't going to be something that we're just touching once every three years, but it's something that we're going to be addressing on a permanent basis. So I appreciate the vice mayor bringing our members in, or some of our members in. I know my staff, we actually have a housing specialist on my staff now that is working on housing projects, too. So, Commissioner Castillo, I believe we are addressing seriousness to this. I think we're, I think we're approaching it in a different way, and I'm happy that this committee has made some strong recommendations in terms of the incentive programs that may support future affordable housing projects.
And I'm the alternate.
Say again, sir?
I'm the alternate today.
Well, right now, the vice, the vice mayor's the appointee, and the Commissioner Cyper is the alternate. On the, our city's Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yep.
You're in the bigger room.
I'm the bigger one. Okay. All right, item three, any further discussion? Hearing, City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyper?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mayor, if we pull 17, 18, and 19, please.
Let me go to item seven first. The others are coming up. Item seven, City Commissioner, Vice Mayor Good.
Motion to approve the minutes of the Wednesday, November 3, 2021, regular commission meeting.
Okay, moved by who's that?
Second.
I didn't hear what was.
Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo made the motion, is there a second?
Mr. Good made the motion.
Vice Mayor made the motion.
Oh, that's right, that's right, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Good, Commissioner Castillo seconded the motion. All right, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just, I just wanted to refer to item 9A, and in the notes, there's reference where, it's on page six, and it says, Vice Mayor Good said the city should lower its rating to less than 7%. And then again, it makes another reference to 7% and 2%. These are not percent numbers, these are whole numbers, these are ratings, not percentages. So I ask that the percentages be removed.
Okay. City Clerk? Got that?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
All right, on, call a roll, please, on that.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyper?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, let's go to, right to, before we take the other items, quasi additional appeals hearing, City Attorney, we're on item 17.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. There are three items before you, and, and I'm going to read some of the rules of the road into the record to give you some clarification. Allow me to read 17, 18, and 19 into the record as items that will be considered by separate motion as appropriate. 17 is a request from Alita Marin to appeal the Board of Adjustment decision pertaining to residential zoning variance number ZVR 2021-15 for the property located at 8500 Taps Street. Number 18 is a request from Natalie Carter to appeal the Board of Adjustment decision pertaining to residential zoning variance number ZVR 2021-16 for the property which is located at 1400 Northwest 154th Lane. And lastly, item number 19 on the agenda is a request from Adrian and Carrie, you'll have to help me here, Jadego Singh?
Yes.
I do all right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, good. To appeal the Board of Adjustment decision pertaining to residential zoning variance ZVR 2021-23, ZVR 2021-24 for the property which is located at 19972 Southwest Fifth Court.
Mayor?
Great, Commissioner Cyper.
Yes, Mayor, since the city attorney read all three of the items, because they are very related to each other, I would like to just, if, if any or all of these items are approved this evening, I'm requesting that we refund to these folks their appeal money, as well as any costs that they had for advertising.
Agreed.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just, just to get into the record, the procedure under which these items may legally be heard is provided for in Section 32.083 of the City's Code of Ordinances, references appeal of board decisions. To the extent that this is what is called an appellate proceeding, and you've been, you have all been down this road before, it's not what's called a de novo hearing, where you're having a brand-new hearing, where people will be testifying and providing you new testimony. Essentially, the appeal shall be presented to the City Commission as soon as practicable, subject to the notice requirements and procedures set forth herein for a final determination as to whether or not there was competent and substantial evidence to support the board's ruling. If it is, and before you, by the way, it is a compendium, that means a package of information. The Green Book or the online agenda has the petitions of each of the three parties, it has their support for their individual petitions, it has the, the record from below, letters, emails, et cetera, all of which support their applications. If it be the will of the commission, much like in appellate court, and you've been down this road before as well, to consider those things on the record without a hearing from the applicants, this commission has the prerogative and the legality under Section 32.083 to make a decision without oral argument, that is, without the presentation by staff, if you so choose, and without the presentation of the applicants, if the commission is in agreement to proceed to support the requested appeals.
Parliamentary question.
Hold on, I think you're right about the feeling.
At least that's my. I don't know yet until, until the mayor tests the order with the issue.
All right, parliamentary procedure, go ahead.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Would it be out of order with procedure for me to move items 17, 18, and 19 together to approve?
It wouldn't be out of order.
Inasmuch as I'd like to support your request, because they are, they're legally different properties, that's the problem. If the support for each is on the same.
Well, because I saw them on quasi-consent.
Yes.
So I was asking the question.
Yes. Mayor, what I like to do.
Shh, shh, shh. There's somebody talking, Mr. Schwartz. I've been recognizing, have you recognized, buddy chair?
Mayor, do you recognize him?
No, because somebody's still talking.
So, 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 in answer to the, you, you want us to handle it one at a time?
Yes, the substantive basis would be the same for each of the three, but they should be taken up by separate motion.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Schwartz, you're recognized.
City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
I, I watched the proceedings, I've read the backup. Would it be in order for the motion to, a boilerplate now, to grant the appeal and refund all costs associated with the appeal process? Would that be?
You have to vote on it.
Mayor, well.
I'm, I'm asking.
But you have to vote on it. Bring up the item, and then we'll vote on it.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if you will.
Yeah.
There, there are certain costs and expenses associated with these three appeals. There's an appellate filing fee, which I can't answer, I mean, it's of some number of dollars that's required by the code for each of the applicants who's before you legally in accordance with that section of the Code of Ordinances. If the motion by the, by the Commissioner Cyper and/or Commissioner Schwartz, or by the commission as a whole, is to waive the appellate fees.
She mentioned it.
That is an item which is legally within your prerogative. I would suggest that waiving permit fees is a bit of an outside the scope of what we might be able to approve, because those are, there are thousands of permit fees, there are limited numbers of appeals like this.
All right.
Mayor?
Hold on, before we get into any confusion, let's take each item.
Okay.
Right, that's, that's what we're going to do.
Mayor, I just want to clarify to.
On which item?
Well, what City Attorney just said that, that, what I was asking for on the refund of the appeal and permitting, I wasn't asking for permitting, I asked for appeal and advertising costs that they had.
Right.
Not, not the permitting. So, Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 17 going forward with the, with the refunding of the appeal cost as well as any advertising cost.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor?
Is there a second? I didn't hear a second.
I have a second, yes.
Second by Commissioner Schwartz. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, if you're going to take them up separately, which I recommend legally that you do, to the extent that you're making a motion on each, you're also accepting the discussion without oral argument from either the staff or the appellate.
We understand that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, discussion on item.
Mr. Stan has one item to add to the record, which she and I did discuss.
Are you staff?
Of limited, yes, he is.
We're not taking any discussion from you.
It's, sorry, Mike Stan, Planning and Economic Development Director. Mr. City Attorney, just for the clarity of the record, if the motion is to grant the variance-
Exactly.
And overturn the decision of the Board of Adjustment, is there certain nomenclature that needs to be made in that motion so it's properly recorded in the development order? The answer is that the motion, as I hear it from Commissioner Cypher and/or Commissioner Schwartz, is to essentially accept the appeal and to grant the appeal. Accept and grant it, which would allow the decision-making on the Board of Adjustment to sign to be reversed. Thank you.
All right, further discussion. Hearing done, city clerk, call a roll, please, on seventeen.
Seventeen.
Commissioner Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor? Yes, Commissioner.
I'd like to move number eighteen with appellate costs and advertising.
Is there a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cypher. Discussion. Hearing done, city clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Cypher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor? Item nineteen.
Item nineteen again, Mayor.
I'd like to move number nineteen, motion to approve the appeal with refund of appellate costs, appellate fees and advertising fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cypher, discussion. Hearing done, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming by.
I could, Mayor, before they leave, city attorney-
Commissioner Schwartz? What item is this?
It's on, it's on all three, actually. We have approximately a one-month delay in the, in this project. Is there, city attorney, is there any way that we could facilitate an expedited permit review process? I know we can't waive fees, but can we at least get, is there any legal way of us moving this forward much faster so we don't have any more delays?
A lot of permits want to be expedited.
Mayor-
City Attorney?
Mayor, I think that the commission is on to a very important point, to the extent that you can, you control the contract with your billing department, that's certainly a fact, you don't, however, control the chief billing official. So as an independent public officer under Florida law, the basic answer is that by virtue of this discussion alone, you have a deputy city manager sitting next to me on my left and sitting to your right who's hearing this issue, you can make that request as either a matter of consensus or by motion if you feel inappropriate.
I'll make my motion to direct the city administration to take all means necessary to expedite the permit process for all three properties.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cypher, discussion. Hearing done, all in favor, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, thanks, Coach.
All right, we're on item ten now, city attorney.
Item ten is Commissioner, Vice Mayor Good.
Correct. Commissioner Good, Vice Mayor Good, breathe. You're on item ten, sir. That's your item. What's that?
I was saying something there.
How much money do you have?
We were hoping to avoid.
Just kidding, I'm gonna jury full moon tonight. Yeah, you gotta, you have to go to the mic and push the mic up, you have to give us your name and your address for the record.
My name is Arturo LaSalle, I'm a Alida Marine son, and one of the best thing that can ever happen to us is came to United States and become American citizen, and the second thing is moved to Pembroke Pine City.
God bless you, brother.
Thank you so much, thank you to you guys and to the program of the low-income housing. My mom has a house, and thank you so much, keep it up, keep building, keep helping people.
We're here to serve you.
Thank you, thanks for your service.
Thanks.
Appreciate that.
City Attorney, all right, Vice Mayor, item ten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So item ten is motion to approve the agreement with the BG Group LLC for the demolition of the old city hall building in the amount not to exceed $323,560.64, which includes an owner contingency in the amount of $6,221.64, and the cost to provide a payment and performance bond in the amount of $6,223, utilizing pricing from the City of Fort Lauderdale contract number 12471-813 pursuant to section thirty-five point one eight, print C, print five of the City Code of Ordinance to approve as best of serving with GLE Associates Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $4,530, and to approve the agreement with Coon Engineering LLC in the amount not to exceed $34,320, which includes an owner contingency in the amount of $3,120 pursuant to section thirty-five point one eight, print C, print two of the City Code of Ordinance.
Okay, is there a second by Commissioner Schwartz?
I think we all want to second this.
Okay. Hearing that, discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so-
You need to discuss it?
Well, I bring it up because, you know, certainly we all are very, very happy to see progress being made in regards to demolition of this building. But I, one of the things that I really do want to bring attention to is, you know, that's named after Mr. Flanagan, that building. And on the corner, we have-
So that was named after Woody Hampton.
Hmm?
That was Woody Hampton.
Woody Hampton.
The building was named after Woody Hampton?
Yeah, the city manager then.
Right.
Yeah, there's two buildings.
There was two names to it.
Okay, so Woody Hampton and Mr. Flanagan.
Right.
And so what I'd like, why I'm bringing this up is because I would hate to see us do a demolition to the building and lose some of the history of what those buildings represented. So I ask that we somehow, in this process, find a way to put a memorial up, whether it be on city property on the rights away.
We have one.
Mayor, Mayor?
We have, we have a Flanagan one, a-
But we don't have a Hampton as well, too.
There's two brass plaques there.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Cypher.
To add to Vice, to Vice Mayor, I think exactly what you're talking about, there's already, I know that I've had some conversation with city manager in past, talking about, you know, when the building goes down, that that on Pines Boulevard, where all that is, that that try to be saved as much as possible and an appropriate place be found where it needs to, needs to go to preserve that part of the, of the history. So is that kind of really what you're-
Yes, it's, it's exact. So I just wanted to just put it on record that it's something that we're also keeping focus on, we're not letting the history, lose the history of Pembroke Pine, the same important people that serve us.
The conversation was a while back, so this is a good reminder of-
Yeah, and my office is coming down last.
Mayor, the, there were two plaques there. Thank you, sir. There were two plaques there, if I recall, one of them was the Flanagan naming plaque, the other one was the Woody Hampton naming plaque. And when we have a naming plaque and the building is demolished, it's good form to just relocate it and just put something else there that say, this is the, this is the plaque that was at this former building and we continue to honor these individuals. And we certainly have many walls in the city that we can pick some and rededicate them even if we wish to. But I always, I was always told that there was a time capsule there. And that in eighty-nine, I believe it was, or was it before then, eighty-seven, that there was a time capsule put there. I remember having that conversation with Mr. Dodge, I'm sorry, he's not here, but Mr. Gonzalez, if you could have that discussion with Mr. Dodge. My understanding was that there was a time capsule there and we shouldn't forget to dig it up.
I think we dug it up.
Oh, did we?
I'm not sure, but we'll find out.
Okay.
Good point. All right, good point, though.
Yeah, I just don't want us to get so excited to take it down and we forget some-
But we're okay, put our name on a building, though, right? Put our name out there, right? For a building, we're okay with that. All right, city clerk, call a roll.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
At last, yes.
Commissioner Cypher?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item fourteen.
Mayor, can I ask the, Mr. Gonzalez, does it start tomorrow?
Okay, item fourteen, sir.
I wish.
That would be me, Mayor.
Yeah, item fourteen, Commissioner Cypher.
Thank you. Motion to approve request to advertise solicitation, A, PSN-21-02 Transportation Master Plan.
Second. Second by Commissioner Castillo, go ahead, Commissioner Cypher.
Thank you, hold on one second, I just got to get to the page. I read through this, you know, this was an item that I placed on the agenda and I appreciate my colleagues' support of this, it's something that needs to happen, and I'm glad that we are as quickly as we are moving forward with it. I just did want to say a little bit, Mayor, about what we're actually asking for, this master traffic plan for the entire city, is that the plan shall review and analyze the existing conditions of roadways, pedestrian, bicycle, and transit level of services as well as intersection analysis. Consultant must take the following into consideration when collecting data. Traffic generated by public, public charter and private schools, bike routes, pedestrian crosswalk signalization, and pedestrian safety islands, priority signalization for emergency vehicles and transit, American Disabilities Act compliance, streetlight patterns, streetscape, Broward MPO Long Range Comprehensive Plan, MPO Complete Streets Master Plan, and Broward County's Mobility Advancement Program, that's the penny for transportation program. Also, the firm shall provide at a very minimum the following services. Public engagement, we're going to have public engagement for this to happen, a minimum of four public community meetings. And there will be meetings with this, and those meetings will be with city mayor and commission, city manager's office, public works, police department, fire department, planning department, recreation and cultural arts, community services, and the City of Pembroke Pine's charter schools. And that is to then bring about this commission, you know, citywide master traffic plan. And what it needs to also do is address what they consider short-range, which is five-year, mid-range, which is ten-year, and long-range, which is twenty-year transportation plan. And I know that that certainly sounds like a very long, drawn-out process, that's talking about a twenty-year, and knowing that we need, we desperately need a lot of help, like now, for things. But you've got to start somewhere, you have to start somewhere, and this is the first initiative that we really have taken along these lines to actually get a citywide master plan done, so that we, we have, we as a commission then have better information on how, how we want to ask and approve certain things, how we are then going to have to financially deal with certain projects that come forward or recommendations from this traffic engineer, traffic consultant engineer. And so again, I'm very happy that we have this item, I look forward to putting this advertisement out and getting, you know, getting responses back and then get moving on this long, long overdue project for our city that's going to help us out, I think, in a lot of different ways. So, again, colleagues, I appreciate your support initially, and I would ask again for your support on moving this forward.
Item fourteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I, just one quick thing, too. So one of the things I noticed that we're, you know, targeting ARP-
I'm sorry?
Were American Rescue Plan funds.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I also just want to bring to attention that maybe to also consider the infrastructure bill that just recently passed because I know that the ARP-
I think that's automatic.
It's a little bit challenging, I just, I was in a meeting today about how those funds are going to come down through us, it's still going to be a federal procurement element, but they're a little bit more focused on these type of, of projects, you know, transportation projects, because the transportation projects aren't necessarily fully funded through the ARP, and the ARP, what the ARP-
It's a part of it, yeah.
Yeah, the ARP is, you know, we have the money, but if it doesn't meet their criteria, which means, you know, protect from any future kind of situation like what we just went through with the COVID, you know, they could claw that money back. So I just want to bring the attention that we have another pot of money and just make certain staff-
Good point.
And Vice Mayor, I know that that was some of the discussion that Mr. Dodge had and the attorney also had, looking at the legality of where all the funding, and as I said, the funding part of it as well, how, how the plan, but then how do we actually make it happen?
We'll get money through the MPO from the-
It's more encouraging to know that we're going to get the funds.
If I could, in connection with that, Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Mr. Gonzalez, are you aware of any number for that allocation that has been awarded to Pembroke Pine yet?
Pearl, do you have that information? No? I don't have that information.
It's interesting, because just forty-eight hours ago, the last time I took a nap, I was in Honolulu, and they are getting $2.3 million, it was billion dollars of that money. It was announced on TV. So some cities are actually getting their number and some cities have not. And so I think that we should, we should look to see, and I'm glad you brought this up, Vice Mayor, I was thinking very much along the same lines, that the, that's going to be an additional pot of money, that we should be very strategic about how it is that we're going to use it, and what we can use it for, and what projects we might be able to swap out and get done real, real quick because they're ready to go and all that other kind of stuff. But just generally speaking, I'm very, very thankful for this, for this, it is long overdue. And the challenge of this, I think, is in making sure that it has the components. And the way I see it, the components have to include capacity, which is road projects, it has to address volume, which is getting more kids on buses, and it has to address the currently funded projects, and now the new layer of funding that comes, that comes with the money from the federal government. If we could focus on those three things, among anything else that we look at, this project can be successful. I don't know where the timeframes came from, but I was hoping that this would be a much more of an expedited thing. I don't know that, that the timeframes will go over well. I know that those are established timeframes with some of the funding sources, but I would, I would not want to pigeonhole particular projects to timeframes. I would rather pigeonhole particular projects to how quickly can we get them done, you know, compliantly, obviously, they have to be done compliantly, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look to pigeonhole them to particular, and I'm not saying that that was suggested, I'm just saying the timeframes is not an element that we've discussed before, so I don't want it, I don't want it to assume like, like, like we've, we've agreed to timeframe. Let's, let's allow the, the engineers to come on board and get on board and look at the elements and see how, how much of this we can chip away quickly. Thank you.
And let's not forget, as was mentioned, that it also includes old piping and old infrastructure that has to be replaced.
Right.
And that's part of that as well.
Mayor?
It's on its way.
Yeah, Mayor, also, in what Commissioner Castillo said, we, we did have discussion here prior about there, with getting on, on board, getting on the list, if you will, prior about there with getting on, on board, getting on the list, if you will, with MPO, with, with monies that we were talking and we, we've done that. It's my understanding that we have, we have submitted the correct paperwork. Mr. Dodge has, you know, got, done that to get us and make sure that we are in that timeline of money for some of these road projects, not, not necessarily what's all right in here, but some that were additional projects and that we were looking at doing as well. So.
We are on the timeline.
We're on a timeline on that part, but we secured our spot on there. So, so that's it. But, but again, some of these transportation projects that have been, or issues that have been discussed recently are of, and I don't want to say like a smaller scope, but a bit of a smaller scope or more unique and individual that we may be able to handle quite honestly ourselves. And these are for like a lot larger citywide projects. I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
But don't forget those other pots of money.
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
So the surtax money is coming in.
Yep.
For infrastructure and fibers. Yeah, we're going to get all that.
So we just have to be really good stewards of how that money comes in.
We're going to be good stewards and push it.
Thank you.
All right. Senator Clark, on item fourteen.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item fifteen, Commissioner Seifel.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the assignment of the agreement with DBI Services LLC for the operation, maintenance, and management of the city's right of ways to D'Angelo Contracting Services, DCS.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Go ahead, Commissioner Seifel.
Um, when I, when I saw this, I first, my first question was, is this, are we legally allowed to just make a, an assignment of, of an existing contract? And I was told that yes, we do have the authority to be able to do that. Some of my concern was exactly what, understanding what happened and from everybody that I've been able to speak to, it was just one day, one, one day DBI was there and the next day they were not there and, and life had to continue. And so this D'Angelo came in and what I was, what I wanted some clarification from someone would be that in fact, as was stated here, that those employees that had been DBI employees have been offered positions to stay with, with, if this is approved, to stay with the new company coming in, that they're protected that way. So can I get an answer on that?
Yes, if I can have Steve Buckland come up and.
Mr. Buckland?
And explain it.
If you could answer that, please, for the Commissioner Seifel.
Yes, Stephen Buckland, Public Services. Yes, I, I have confirmed that, that a majority of the boots on the ground employees that were employed by DBI have been retained by the, the new company, which is D'Angelo Contracting Services. And we actually have a representative from that company that's here tonight, if you would like for him to expand upon that.
Well, when you, when, when you say majority, how many employees are we talking about?
As far as the boots on the ground employees, I believe there was eight and I know that there are six that have been retained.
Is there another group of employees that, that?
Well, DBI was a very large company.
Right, but I mean specifically for what, for here, for us?
No, we, no, the eight, the eight employees were the ones that were actually working at the city of Pembroke Pines for our particular project.
Okay. And, and so you think six out of the eight were retained?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Same, same, doing same thing?
Yes, ma'am.
No loss in pay, no loss in benefit, no?
I cannot attest to that.
Well, can the, can the representative come up and answer that then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Need your name and company, sir?
I'm Mark Robinson, representing D'Angelo Contracting.
Good evening.
We actually paid them a bit more, so we did get.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Sorry, ma'am.
Can you say it louder?
Yes, we actually paid them more.
You paid them a bit more. Say that one more time.
We paid them more.
Okay, good.
That's always good.
That's always good here.
Yeah, it was very important to us to retain the same people and provide the same services that we've been doing for your great city.
Well, thank you for coming on board.
And, and there were eight and you were able to retain six?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I'm not going to ask you because there may be whatever your issues are and that's, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm glad about that. Uh, City Attorney, the contract that, that we are assigning now to D'Angelo is word for word, the exact same contract that we had with DBI, their timeframe requirements, all of that is exactly the same, correct?
May I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
It is a mirror image of that, that document. Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Further discussion? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
So you're stepping into the shoes of DBI?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and when does their contract expire?
October thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
So you're asking to step into the shoes of DBI until then?
Yes, sir.
So for all intents and purposes, you're the new DBI?
Yes, sir.
There's no change in the contract. The only change in the contract is your name versus where, where DBI isn't there anymore.
Correct, even the price is the same, even in today's incredible labor market, which is very expensive.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, City Attorney, you, you agree?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, item fifteen, City.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, I have a question. So, so there are eight, eight employees for DBI?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's the, what's the average salary, annual salary per employee?
It ranges because some are lead, some are technicians, some are lead technicians, and we have an office manager and a project manager. Um, so the project manager, we gave him a substantial increase to stay on board. The technicians, we increased, I believe, don't quote me, but about twenty-five cents an hour to a dollar an hour. We also went from having one lead technician level, which is a higher level than a technician, to three lead technicians. So hopefully we're providing a higher level of service, but.
So what's the average annual salary?
So, um, the average would be for a technician is around twelve to fifteen dollars an hour, up to ninety thousand dollars a year for the project manager. So I don't know what the average is, probably.
So that's about thirty thousand dollars a year?
We'd put the average in probably thirty to forty thousand dollars, sir.
All right. So we'll say, all right, forty, you know, let's say fifty percent overhead, blah, blah, blah. We'll give it sixty thousand dollars per person. So, no, no, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just gonna share something here. So sixty thousand times eight is, that's about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It's a one point three million dollar contract. So typically, you know, your labor is your most expensive. I don't know where, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars is going. I, I intended to, I, I don't, I, I don't agree to this contract. I understand this industry, I understand this business. I, I don't see this level of service for what we pay. We are nowhere near the level of service that we should be receiving. You know, I spend a lot of time myself, you know, I actually got a little bike and I ride around, I take pictures of things and, and there's a lot of things that are out there and sometimes they take quite a bit of time that I know, that I report to get repaired. So I've never been a fan of DBI and, and that's no reflection on you, but I, I'm, I'm not very comfortable with this contract. And then just to turn around and to give it away, you know, to another company, I, you know, I still think that we should be thinking about what are we paying and what level of service are we receiving for, for this kind of service? Because what you all do is the most important, one of the most important things in the city because you're, you, you deal with the trip hazards, you deal with the potholes, you deal with other things, which, and that was another thing too on this contract, which was interesting when you look at the scope of service, it talked about doing pressure cleaning, um, and we just gave a contract out, pressure cleaning, the same thing that this contract's supposed to cover. So, you know, that was just another conflict for me. So I, I really believe that we should, you know, if, if, if we're going to do anything, I would say, you know, that maybe we should just go ahead and just do it for the rest of this year, but we should be putting this out for bid too. Or we really should be thinking about at this value, at one point three million, is, is bringing people in-house who are a lot more responsive to dealing with some of our concerns that we have out in the community because the level of service of an in-house workforce is, is, is certainly much different than what we're getting through a contract this time. So.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Sir?
He's got a point he's making.
How long?
You have an answer?
The con.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Another two years on that.
Two years?
What, we are, if I may for just a moment, we're signing a contract and I believe that we're in a, in a, with renewals on top of that?
Two years.
Yeah.
Two years on the contract.
Two years on the contract, but the renewals are, are also into the contract as well?
Let me interrupt you. I'm trying to get Mr. Gonzalez to give us an answer that is not shouted out, but an actual answer. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. Sir, currently, as, um, the gentleman mentioned, um, and the City Attorney stated, the contract is as it is currently with DBI, which it extends an additional two more years. Once that two years is up, um, we can either go out for an RFP or, uh, I don't know if the contract calls for any renewals.
I just, excuse me, sir, I'll just like clarify, there is no renewals left on this contract. So in two years, it has to go.
In two years, it has to go off.
You have to go on.
There's, there's a question, okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor, go ahead, keep continuing.
A little weird, right?
Vice Mayor, continue.
Yeah, so.
Vice Mayor, continue.
So what I, what I, what I like to, what I like to ask is, is to make a motion here that we just go ahead and allow this contract to, to be absorbed for, for the remainder of the year and then we go out to bid or we also compare that to what we can do with an in-house force?
Mayor?
Commissioner Castillo?
I, I, I like the way you're thinking on this. This, face it, this came to us a little abruptly. There wasn't a lot of advanced notice about this. We didn't really have memoranda or anything like that. So when we all saw it, uh, we all sort of had the same impression of it. Seeing the gentleman now, I feel a lot better about it. But you've, you've asked some very, very specific questions about the scope of work, about the, the, the level of service, about the budget and, and, and where it goes. All of that is available. Now, my question is, is time of the essence here? Can we deal with this in the first meeting of, of December so that we can get a memo from the department saying, here's the answers to your questions, here's how this budget works?
Mr. Gonzalez?
You know, for all I know, for all I know is the, the, we have, we have all the answers to what's in the budget and it's wrapped up in equipment or something.
Let's ask Mr. Gonzalez for an answer. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. We can wait another week or week and a half to bring it back on the first meeting in December.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
I would be more comfortable making, making a decision to, to, on one year versus two years based on, based on the, the, the very specific questions that Vice Mayor asked rather than just making it today. I'd rather, I'd like to see more information about this and I'd also like to understand a little bit more about how it came to be. This was, this came a little abruptly and, you know, it, it's an unusual move. It's not that you guys can't make it, I'm simply saying that it, it didn't come with any more information. So the questions that Vice Mayor is asking are in order. So I, I, I would like this, I would like to see those answers.
We appreciate what you've, you've done.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
Yes, Mayor, who's currently doing the work? I mean, if work is getting done every single day, correct?
Commissioner Seifel asks who's doing the work?
We are doing it at risk right now to help you out. So these are mission essential services and impact the safety of your citizens. So just a quick answer to your question, labor is only one component. There's also trucking equipment.
Right.
Materials, which are big price, subcontractors, corporate overhead, we've got to support the team that's here. So labor is just one piece. I understand your concern. You actually lay out the requirements in the contract of what we need to achieve, we need to achieve it, period. And if we're not, hold us accountable. Give us a chance to do it.
We will. All right, Commissioner Schwartz, then we're going to move on to item.
Commissioner Seifel asked a question.
All right, good. Senator Clark, all of them.
No, I, I'd like to make then a motion to defer this item until the next meeting.
I thought we had that already.
Is that what we did? Okay.
I think we're all good for.
Do that.
All right. So the Attorney, you.
If you will, please formally adopt the motion to defer.
All right, Vice Mayor, we're going to formally about motion to defer until the next.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll second that motion.
All right, second by Commissioner Castillo.
Don't worry about being at risk. We ain't going anywhere.
All those in favor?
Keep doing the services.
Call roll, please, City Clerk.
So it's deferred certain, correct, Mayor?
Yes. First meeting in December.
First December meeting.
Call roll.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Welcome on board. All right, thank you all. Good, good discussion. All right, now we're going over to.
Oh, God, where are we?
You done?
I can get my fingers to work. We're now on item twenty-three, City Attorney.
That is correct, Mayor. Well done.
Thank you.
Twenty-three is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-one R fifty-seven, which is in fact approving, or resolution as it were, approving and authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute a reinstatement and first amendment between Broward County and the city of Pembroke Pines, providing for the disbursement of home program funds for the home buyer assistance program and extending the term of the agreement, providing for conflicts, severability, providing for an effective date.
Move. Move by Commissioner Castillo, second by Commissioner Seifel, discussion. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed. And the number for the record, Mayor, is number thirty-seven eighty-one.
Thank you. I league, we have meetings coming up tomorrow morning, there's a couple of meetings and then we have our ethics.
We have ethics.
Meetings by Zoom.
Yep.
Anything else, City, Commissioner Seifel?
No, Mayor.
Manager, do you have anything?
No item, sir.
I have an, I have a question for the City Manager.
City Attorney?
Mayor, I have a question for the City Administration.
The manager don't have anything.
Well, then I have a question for Mr. Gonzalez.
Mr. Gonzalez, Commissioner Schwartz has a question for you.
Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, I was promised that the, that the waste billing, the, the monthly billing item was supposed to have been on this agenda. It was, uh, it was directed to the Finance Director to have all these questions answered. We're now going into December, which means that we've got one shot at getting this thing done. So is there a reason why it didn't make the agenda?
Mr. Gonzalez?
I, I had, I had asked, it's not like this was.
Let's get an answer.
I asked for it on the, on November third.
Okay.
I said I was expecting it on the seventeenth.
Mr. Gonzalez?
So where is it?
I, I had no control of, of the item itself, but what I can do is I'll speak to the manager tomorrow. We'll, um, regroup with the Finance Department and the analysis that they ever completed already.
Okay.
They did complete an analysis today and I'll speak to the manager, see if we can bring it on the first meeting in December.
Okay, and is that analysis any, any difference from when I had the item in September? Because there was, there was a pretty detailed analysis then. So is this brand new information that we haven't seen before that we can expect?
Um.
Probably not.
Prob, there's pros and cons related to it that I think that is important.
But you'll find out, of course.
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, and, you know, maybe I'll speak to the manager tomorrow when he can release the report, um, prior to the agenda item, but there are, I, I briefly read through it today and there's pros and cons and so forth related to the program or your recommendation and therefore, um, you know, I think that, um, you know, we need to, you know, talk about it and.
The, the, the second question I have for you. The administration works extremely hard to get these agendas out early and the clerk has done a tremendous job getting the agenda out early. We just deferred an item that, that folks had five days to ask some of these questions. Um, did anyone reach out to the administration to ask about, um, ACS or, or this?
No, sir.
No, that's the reason why I had to vote no, because there was plenty of opportunity. The, the third thing, um, with respect to, um, uh, security, uh, city, um, we, we are, we have a, we have a, we have a, we have a, we're protected under state law to discuss security items.
Public buildings.
With, with respect to, to public buildings, um, I'd like to have a, uh, one of these meetings scheduled for December third, uh, to recap, uh, a conversation I had with you earlier this morning so that we're all on the same page.
Everybody agree? What are we talking about?
Yes, and if I can make a comment, Mayor. Um, I, I did speak to the Commissioner this morning about an incident that occurred. Um, I did mention to him that I was going to provide him with additional information. I did try calling you today.
I understand.
I do have that information that might change, uh, your proposal, your request.
Good, all right. Let me ask you a question, Commissioner. Who's picking up like Elon used to pick up in the streets and all that? Who does that?
Where's, is Steve here?
You know, let me, let me, let me tell you why I'm raising this question. I'm getting a little fed up with driving around this beautiful city.
There's a lot of litter.
And seeing that we have garbage bags.
Yep.
Bumpers, old tires.
Buggles.
Haven't, well, I'm, I'm, no, see, I'm being very serious, you know, about picking up the garbage that's on the streets.[1637.16] on the streets. We used to have somebody just go around, and I used to watch them and pick it up. I can tell you specifically where these have been for a week. I shouldn't be. Mr. Buckland?
Mr. Buckland.
Listen, I don't want to take up any more time, but I'm just saying, I'm making a comment, that as I'm driving around the streets of this beautiful city, and I know I call you and say, look, there's something here, you go and pick it up, but who is responsibility is to pick this up? I shouldn't have to call you.
Litter he's talking about. I mean. Well, we have a company called Y-Y-Y that has taken over the litter and the brief control contract.
They're doing a very good job.
They have zones that they go through the city, so they do once a week on different roads. So, they patrol the whole city over the week, and then the Public Services takes care of it in the middle of the time.
All right, but let's do it a little better, because I see stuff I can mention to you that has been here for a week.
Mayor, I echo your concern. This is exactly why we have this frustration, because it's being picked up once a week, instead of everyone working together, regardless of what department you're in, if you see something, make the call, you know.
I agree with that.
I am extremely frustrated that the departments are not talking to each other. It is not the role of this commission to manage this city. It is not. It is not our role to micromanage this city. We need to have everyone on the same page, whether it's Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the crossing guards, elected officials, and citizens. We have, honest to God, 2022, we should not have to make these calls, Mayor. Okay, if you see it, get it done. I think I heard the Vice Mayor say he rides bicycles, and he wants to see how long something is there before something's acted upon. Okay, if we're paying a million dollars to clean stuff up, it shouldn't take us to make a phone call to make it happen.